This is a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the sole purpose of rendering a decision on the J&amp;J Greenwich LLC application.
I'm on. It's turned on.
It's not loud. It's not very loud.
I don't, well, the red light's on.
Why didn't you guys do this while I was waiting?
Is everybody else's light on? Is it?
You know, they're...
None of them?
What's it show?
Well...
Transcribing the...
We're recording it though.
Yeah, it's on. We're going?
Yep.
I think we're good now.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I need to repeat that, or is...
Sure, I think probably if you don't mind.
Okay. This is a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the sole purpose of rendering a decision regarding the J&amp;J Greenwich LLC application. I would like to start the discussions this afternoon with a review of five areas that have surfaced during the hearings. Number one is the history. Number two are the departmental approvals. Number three are traffic issues. Number four, size of the building or bulk issues. And number five, from my notes, any of the applicant's agreement to some of the conditions that were proposed by the public for this proposal, if it in fact is approved. Number one, the history of the 6110G statute. It was enacted, or regulation, it was enacted in 1987 by this commission. That was 30 years ago. And it was mentioned in the 1998 POCD Housing Section that at that time only 14 dwelling units had been approved in the previous 11 years, or approximately 1.3 dwelling units per year. It became more important when the 2009 POCD was done, and in the housing section, moderate income housing was addressed in three more specific terms under the three action items. Number 3.11 was to consider zoning regulations to require a percentage of multifamily development units as moderate income housing. 3.12, encourage moderate income housing in the areas served by transit. And number three, perhaps most importantly, 3.13 is to review the Building Zone Regulation Section 6110G, moderate income housing, to determine if incentives and restrictions are adequate to encourage the development of moderate income housing units. Subsequent to that, and pursuant to the plan of conservation and development, the Board of Selectmen appointed a Housing Task Force Committee, and they met from January of 2010 to January of 2012. They had 44 meetings, and they developed particular recommendations which later became a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. From that, the Board of Selectmen appointed the Community Development Partnership, which was a volunteer group. They met from October of 2012 to June of 2014. They drafted a specific change to 6110G, the moderate income housing regulation, and they presented it to the commission in June of 2014. There were a number of public meetings held on the modification of 6110G in the spring of 2015, and in June of 2015, the commission voted to approve the regulation with some minor modifications. In the time from the original 1987 regulation until the June 2015 regulation, there were only 32 units created in that 20-year timeframe, which also is 1.15 dwelling units per year. Number two in the review of the application, there are a number of departmental approvals for this application. Number one, IWWA has approved it. Number two, DPW has approved it. Number three, the ARC has approved it. Number four, SUEA approved it. And number five, Traffic issued no traffic comments on 62217. So that's the final iteration of the plan. Most of the traffic generation to the site is due to the commercial as-of-right uses for this zone. The LB zone permits uses in Use Group 1, Use Group 2A, Use Group 4, and Use Group 9 in the commercial, and Use Group 3 for residential. Based upon information provided by the applicant's traffic engineer, the following is a breakdown of the traffic. The traffic on the four time periods studied, peak hour weekday morning, peak hour weekday midday, peak hour weekday afternoon, and Saturday midday. It works out that on the first one, 74% of the traffic for this site is generated by the commercial use, and 26% of the traffic is generated by the residential use. Those are not particularly large numbers, amounting to a total of 35 trips in that one-hour period called the peak hour. During the midday peak hour, it shifts considerably to the business uses, or what we call the as-of-right uses, to 86% of the traffic generated, and 14% is for the residential. The PM timeframe has exactly the same numbers, 86% generated by the as-of-right business, 14% by the residential, and the Saturday midday, 90% of the traffic is generated by the business, and only 10% due to the residential. In a DPW 12216 memo, and that was at the time of the preliminary application for this project, they asked for three things: that the southeast access to the site be eliminated; they wanted the concept plan showing the impact of widening Sheep Hill Road at the post-road intersection to include a left-turn lane-only lane; and number three, the applicant to coordinate with DPW modifications to the traffic signal for the intersection at the post-road. From that meeting, number one, the southeast access was eliminated, and the applicant did prepare a concept sketch of the three-lane solution to the intersection. This application, this concept sketch was reviewed by DPW, Beta, who is a traffic consultant to the commission, and the town, P&amp;Z staff, and the applicant. The conclusion was that the greatest benefit was through the advanced left-turn timing, since the queue for a left-turn lane had better stacking spaces, and the proposal could not be accomplished in the existing right-of-way, and the proposal could not be accomplished in the existing right-of-way, which is approximately 31 feet at the northwest corner of Apache Place and 32 feet at the southwest corner. The concept sketch that was shown would require a minimum of a 47-foot right-of-way, and this would necessitate taking from both sides, their sketch anyway, would necessitate a property taking from both sides of Sheep Hill. And number three condition from DPW was that the coordination take place, and the application has agreed to this condition, and at this time is proposing a full stop for the pedestrian phase at Sheep Hill and Putnam Avenue. In addition to number three above for the full stop, in a letter from Mr. Peter Scherer of the Board of Education, in a memo dated 62717, also agreed with number three, and further noted that we employ a, his quote, "We employ a crossing guard at this intersection to assure traffic is stopped in all directions, enabling students to safely cross between sidewalks on the northeast and southwest corners." In a letter dated 6217 from Ty &amp; Bond, it outlines the results of a meeting held on 5/25/17 between themselves, DPW, and Beta. During the meeting, and I'm quoting from a letter, I am now quoting from the letter, "During the meeting with Greenwich DPW and the town's traffic consultant, a consensus on the preferred option was reached. The difference between the preferred option and a future option is this matter of concurrent phasing of the lights, and I think both the Board of Ed right now does not want that, and right now the application before us is only for the regular full stop at that intersection." The recommendations discussed and the following improvements are preferred. Install a southbound Sheep Hill Road left-turn advanced phase with revised traffic signal head. The southbound service would allow Sheep Hill traffic to access East Putnam Avenue before movements from Lockwood begins. Number two, construct sidewalk, sidewalk ramp, and pedestrian signal improvements to improve the pedestrian access to the site and to facilitate potential future conversion of the intersection to concurrent pedestrian phasing. As detailed in previous documentation, concurrent phasing would allow for pedestrian movements to occur simultaneously with adjacent traffic flow, as opposed to stopping all vehicular movements, in turn allowing for the redistribution of the existing pedestrian time to vehicular movement." They go further in this letter of June 2nd and state, "As shown in Tables number one and number two, the preferred movements would result in an acceptable overall LOS B or C operation at the East Putnam Avenue and Sheep Hill Road-Lockwood Lane intersection, and acceptable LOS, which means a level of service, LOS D or better operation at all intersection approaches during the four peak hours. The operation of the southbound Sheep Hill Road approach improves significantly with the proposed advanced phase, exhibiting an LOS D operation in lieu of the LOS E/F, which is in the background conditions, which means the existing conditions today. And this results in the reductions in the average delay per vehicle of approximately 30, 35, 135, and 60 seconds in the weekday morning, midday afternoon, and Saturday midday peak hours respectively. Queues on the approach improved by one to three vehicles in the peaks." They then talk about the future conversion of this to concurrent phasing, which would then improve the Sheep Hill intersection by three to seven seconds, but it would operate then at a level of service C in the weekday mornings and B at other peak hours. However, that's just the equipment that they are proposing to be installed can be converted to the concurrent phasing, but is now not being installed that way. Number four, the size of the building or bulk. As noted earlier, the Architecture Review Committee has approved the design of this building. And to put this building's location in context of the post-road, a person standing on the south side of the post-road in front of the Chase Bank and across the street from the proposed site, and looking to their left, would see a three-story dark bronze office building with a penthouse and a substantial number of cell towers on top of the penthouse. As you then go down the post-road and towards the proposed site, the next building is a one-story, I think it's still UPS, and the one-story mobile station. Looking further to the east of the site is a two-story People's Bank building, and then there is a gray office building, I believe it's 1171 West Putnam Avenue, which in fact is three and a half stories high on the west, north, and partially, unpartially east elevations, and then two and a half stories on top of a raised platform on the south elevation. The elevation of the post-road is rising from the project site, becoming higher on both the east and the west approaches from the site. In respect to the Special Permit Section 17, 617D, number nine and 11, the matters of scale and neighborhood characteristics is always a difficult matter when the properties lie within the zone line, adjacent to the zone line, i.e. the R7 to the north and the LB zone which this project is in, since the scale in a residential, in a residential building will not be in scale with a residential building, and there's little to be done about that. It's just the nature of the location of the project in the town. And as noted earlier, the two office buildings which exist on this site clearly are high, and they exceed perhaps, certainly in one case, the number of story, or that is permitted in this zone. And as, if this proposal were not built and the site were developed as-of-right, a 23,000-square-foot building would probably exhibit the same problems with scale to a residential scale. Lastly...
Mr. Chair, the address, I just looked it up for you, is 1171 East Putnam.
That's the gray building?
Yes.
Thank you. And the other building that I referred to is 1111.
Yes.
Thank you much. Lastly, conditions the applicant has agreed to. They would provide and install the hardware needed to create the advanced left-turn lane, and work with, obviously, with DPW on the timing if the project is approved, and before the zoning permit is approved. They would provide documentation that the site is free of hazardous materials and will meet the state standards. And they may have already done that. I know that they agreed at the last hearing to do that, but I didn't have it in my possession. They would limit the truck deliveries to a size of an SU-30 maximum, and to be held between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Any medical offices on the second floor would be subject to P&amp;Z approval. Any restaurant use, if it's submitted, would require a special permit. No fast-food restaurants as defined by the Regulation 6521 would be permitted. No walk-in medical clinics will be permitted without P&amp;Z approval. That's all I had in my notes. There may have been other conditions they agreed to that I'm just unaware of at this time. So if anyone else has any comments?
We had also said, hold on a second, that the intersection improvement would be implemented, would be done prior to the project's start.
I said that.
But it was prior, okay. That the surface parking would be available to the public, to all public, when retail is closed. Oh, the applicant refused that, but was something we wanted.
I think the Riverside Association removed that.
Yeah, they took that one.
They took that one.
And then there was some discussion, again, of hours of operation. The applicant refused, and we talked about midnight, about nothing in the commercial beyond midnight, and the applicant refused that. And then we talked about whether we could have additional restrictions on the types of uses, whether there could be others besides the ones we have discussed. And I'm just going over our notes, my notes on that, so that's all I can add to conditions.
Okay. Well, what I said is what the applicant agreed to. Obviously, if this were to be approved, the commission is free to place any conditions.
So we have that the advanced left-turn lane would be, the work would be done, that the intersection improvement, I'm sorry, the intersection improvement would be done beforehand. There would be documentation that the site is free of hazardous materials. Truck deliveries would be limited to an SU-30 between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Medical office use on the second floor would be subject to P&amp;Z, and the same for medical walk-in clinic of any type, and no fast food. Okay, so that's what they have agreed to as of now. Okay.
Other questions?
I think the application, it takes advantage of our regulations for the housing. It doesn't abuse that taking it, uses it, but it doesn't force it. I think the size and scale of the building, although it's perceived as large, is something that is kind of befitting of the zone that it's in, in the commercial zone. I think that the fact that the applicant has been forthcoming with actually addressing the concerns of the intersection, and providing the technology and the hardware to reconfigure the signalization at their own cost of that intersection, in advance of actually the town doing the same, I think will, may alleviate a lot of the concerns when it's finished with traffic. I also think that the development, as proposed, and what we've heard in terms of the testimony and the neighbors' concerns, work, and I also kind of weigh it against what the potential of what could be there, and the downside to that. We do get, there's going to be a larger building, yes, there'll be traffic, but the potential downside of what actually could be there, where we would have no control of it, is too great. But I think we should, the biggest thing for me actually is to make sure that the traffic signalization is done and tested prior to anything really happening out there.
I think, just tossing it around, that one of the issues is thinking in terms of the as-of-right commercial versus what they are doing. And in the, if they just did commercial without any kind of residential component, what I have in my notes is, and correct me if this is wrong, but that it would be 407,000 cubic feet, and what they're constructing is 518,000. So what you get to do if you're doing the as-of-right commercial is a pretty large structure, and what you're adding on top of that is that the structure getting residential goes to 47 and a half feet instead of the 35. And that's what you're paying for, that by adding residential units, you're adding this 12 and a half feet of height, but you're meeting the objective of the POCD to have more residential in town, to enhance residential where you can, and to have moderate income But, you know, in terms of special permit, I hear what we're saying, that when you look at the neighborhood, it is got, it's not a residential feel. But at the same time, there's a visceral reaction that I have when I see what this is. I say, whoa, that feels very big. It's just a gut reaction. And yet, if I look at it logically, I say it is accomplishing these things, and I think that's why it's been so hard to make this decision. So, but what we're, what makes it taller is what's giving us the residential, and the as-of-right commercial is pretty darn large in those very technical terms. So that's kind of, and that's been my struggle all along with this. So there's one other thing that we had talked about at the hearings in terms of conditions, just to kind of get it on a more practical thing. We had talked about a bus stop, and I believe the applicant had agreed, so if we could do that. And then something that the applicant did not agree to, the bus stop was paid for by the applicant, right? One other thing was this issue of how far the underground garage goes and what it does to limit the future of that intersection. And do you guys have thoughts on that, on something we could do? Go ahead.
Are you done?
I'm done. I'm just like...
Yeah, my biggest, my biggest concern about the development is its future impact on if the town ever does try to improve that intersection, that we, as a commission, make sure that it can be done. And so I'd like a condition that that underground parking structure be designed to handle roadway traffic if that intersection was ever expanded down the future, in the future, because I don't want to approve something that handcuffs the town for intersection improvement. I think the project where we're trying to encourage more affordable units for our teachers, police, fire, so they can live in the town, has been a big push for, you know, the last 18 years, and as our chair pointed out, we haven't really done a great job adding the units in the community, so I think this is a positive from that standpoint. I think the, in order to get that, that's where they got the additional height, and I think the bulk and the, will be somewhat minimized because of the topography of this site and how Sheep's Hill rises up to a higher grade. And so from my perspective, I think that additional height will be somewhat minimized from a residential point of view. And I think the other conditions, I think I would like to have the hours of business stop at midnight, considering it is right, a neighborhood right behind this.
I agree.
I think the condition that you've suggested physically is doable, since the roof of the garage is almost five feet below and has five feet of fill above, so I think that strengthening that piece of the slab, if that's what you meant, to take any future traffic was, would be, I think, doable, and I don't think it would be, it would keep that option open, so.
I would just like to add that I think the applicant has complied with, has made every effort to comply with our zoning regs and with our POCD as well, and has... and with our P O C D as well and has made efforts to minimize the traffic effect on the neighborhood.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Do you, I just want to throw something out there. Could we, is there any interest in a greater percentage of moderate-priced town?
Yes, there is, but I think we might have a problem. It, it was referred to on sort of a tangential basis during the hearing and, and then, and I don't think, at least as I reviewed the, the notes I took and some conversations with staff, I don't think it's.
That we can do that.
It's a tough call. I wish we had perhaps been more specific in it during the testimony, but I think at this point it might be a problem to make that a condition. But if you look at it this way, we are getting four units, which is like four unit, four years of the past. So I think it's, it is indicative of what the incentives have done. I mean, they have, they have worked on this particular project and I think that that's, that was the whole intent of all of the hearings held, a number of hearings. I listed the number when, when I was reading those notes. And I think it did represent a broad consensus of the community. There is however, sometimes it may represent a broad interest of the community, but specific projects sometimes may not meet the approval of the neighbors. But I do think there's clear that the P O C D is, is important in this project. And I think it's the, I mean, there was a lot of time given to this in the two thousand and nine P O C D. And as I mentioned earlier, very specific action items on what should be taken to improve the moderate income housing in Greenwich.
Which then got put through into the regulation, which is the stage you're at right now, reviewing.
Well, yes.
The proposal against the zoning regulation.
Right.
I think one last thing, I think to me it seems that we've, we've got the balance between appropriate development and the need for the affordable housing. I think the application kind of demonstrates.
You, you do what I do a lot of the time, this is moderate income, it is not appropriate.
Moderate. I think the application actually, it provides that balance where it's addressing its even neighbor concerns, its need for its development and the requirements of the town for kind of striking that balance and I think that it does.
I think one of the things may not be clear, but the moderate income housing units are all privately funded. There is no, it's not an eight thirty G project or there's no other commercial funding for it. It's being done by the developer himself, two-town regulations.
In terms of the uses, Katie, I recall the applicant agreeing, and that's what my notes have, but I just want to check it with you, that they would, I've got here that they had agreed that the, they could, they could discuss prior to renting the commercial space. They could, they would discuss it with staff, particularly as regards parking.
Right, the idea being that.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty being, you know, that it was sufficient parking for what was being proposed.
Right, so when you, the concept that we were talking about there is when you have a large building with different commercial tenants in it, that it's incumbent upon the applicant to come in with the first one and then, you know, continue along the way so that they're, that they're managing each tenant that comes in. There's enough parking spaces for them because our regulations aren't standard for every commercial use as it relates to parking. So some uses require more parking than others. So we would, so what we've done in bigger buildings like this is where the first one comes in and then we work with the applicant as the, as the spaces get leased out to make sure that it's always compliant with the regulation.
So would this be an appropriate condition?
Yes, that they work with staff for the zoning permit sign-offs.
Yeah, I was just going back to the old notes and I had underlined that and forgot to mention it.
And one other thing too was the, the declaration of restrictions in the affordability plan. They submitted a draft, but that has to get finalized prior to any zoning permit sign-off.
Okay, so the, the big question is, have we done, okay, so conceptually people feel like this is within the regulations, but have we done everything we can to address the concerns raised by the community as regards this? Is there anything that is outstanding in terms of understanding that it's within the regulation and that we're limited to some extent on what we can ask for? Have we done, is there anything else we can do to address neighbor concerns, red citizen concerns?
Well, I think a lot, I mean, certainly the traffic, there's been, the traffic generated on the site, and again, that was in the statistics given to us by the applicant and so forth, is primarily driven by the business use or the commercial use of the site. The, the traffic from the seventeen units is minimal compared to the traffic from the as-of-right uses on the site. So that traffic is likely to be there depending, if anything was developed on the site had nothing to do with, with the residences in the building. So I think what the applicant has done, and there've been a lot of, there've been a number of meetings and they were summarized in this sort of what I said earlier, that between staff, Beta, who was our traffic consultant, the applicant consultant and DPW, who had originally some of these conditions, and I think they were satisfied that the applicant had addressed those issues. And if in the future they ever wanted to go to concurrent phasing, this equipment, they said, was able to be switched over to that phase. But I think that's somewhere in the future and would require, that would be done only by DPW. Wouldn't be done through this commission.
Yeah, I, I mean, it comes back to, and it was actually a question you asked, I think this last time we heard it. And the applicant ran through what they could build and that's what I read out loud to you from, is what they could build just if they went and did a commercial development without anything else. And it's pretty large and that's the, the point they were making, that, that's the number, that's four hundred and seven thousand cubic feet.
Gets into the bulk area, but I was just talking about specifically the parking and the traffic issues you mentioned.
I have.
But along, where I think you were going with it is that the delta between.
What is being built, what they could do with nothing. They, they could just go in and build, build commercial. The traffic impact that that would have exactly, everything that that impacts is what the regulations would allow. The difference that the residential units make adds to the height, but doesn't significantly change the traffic relative to what they could do anyway. And maybe that says we look at what commercial development can look like on the post road in the future. Maybe this isn't just about moderate income. But this is about what you can build in terms of total commercial space that's bothering people.
The final photometric plan and the detailed landscaping plan.
Yeah, and as I remember, yeah, go ahead.
Should be submitted prior to the zoning permits, I don't know if they provided it as part of the record, but.
Right, but whatever their original landscaping plan was seems pretty, to me, pretty intense. But A R C had approved that.
Right.
So it's not.
Yeah, and they just, there was a question from conservation that I think got answered on Phil.
Right.
Any more comments? Nope, anymore? Do you have any more comments?
You know, good I kept postponing this decision, that's how I felt, it's just, I.
That's not, that's not a comment we can vote on.
It's very, very hard.
We have struck the balance though, I think.
Andy, any more comments?
No.
Do you want to make the motion and I'll add stuff?
Nope, then I'll take a motion.
Okay, I hereby move approval for the final site plan and special merger, special, special permit to merge eleven thirty-seven East Putnam Avenue and five Sheep Hill Road. Remove the existing structures, construct a new forty, four-story, forty thousand square foot mixed-use building with moderate.
It's not four, three and a half.
Three and a half stories, sorry, three and a half. I was reading the, the decision notice. With moderate income, did I say mixed-use, with moderate income housing units? For moderate income housing units. In making this motion, the commission notes that the application meets the goals of the plan of conservation and development as regards moderate income housing, as well as on encouraging residential uses, greater residential uses, since this is a business zone. We also note that all staff and departmental comments have been obtained, that the A R C has approved this, that all comments from the Z E O have been addressed, sewer, conservation, Department of Public Works and traffic. The commission has the following conditions on this approval. The applicant is to fund and construct the intersection, and it's not sole construction, I don't know how to word that.
Provide the traffic control.
For the advanced left turn lane and intersection timing. The, and I think we need to say that the, it will be an all-stop, a full-stop at the, for the pedestrian, for the pedestrian crossing. The applicant is to document that the site is free of hazardous material. Truck deliveries will be limited to an SU thirty-sized truck between seven AM and seven PM. Is that weekdays?
As opposed to weekend?
Yeah.
I don't think it got discussed, so we can make it whatever.
Let's make it weekdays.
That's fine.
As well, except, with the exception of sanitation vehicles. And I had forgotten to, we had specified sanitation vehicles did not have to correspond to that when the applicant agreed.
So they, so on the weekends, it could be at any time?
No, no, no SU, no truck deliveries.
No deliveries at all on the weekends?
Yeah, now I don't know what you do when UPS comes on Saturdays to the stores though.
Probably can't.
Just make it seven days a week?
Well, how about six days a week?
No deliveries on Sunday?
What do you think?
I mean, they don't deliver on Sunday, the post office does. I mean, the issue, you have residents.
Yeah, you have people who want to sleep in the morning.
Residents take UPS as well as, you know, so.
Nick, Victoria?
I think a six, six days.
Six days, six days, Katie.
I don't know how you manage it.
I don't know how you manage it, but.
Why don't we just say seven days and be done with it? Because the post office delivers.
But that's not a truck, but that's not a truck, that's the little guys. Let's do six days and then people get a day to sleep.
So no SU thirty on Sundays?
No SU thirty on Sundays. No medical off, medical office use on the second floor would be subject to P and Z review. The same is true for medical walk-in clinic on any, on any level. No fast food uses. The applicant is to build, to provide and build a bus stop. The underground parking structure will be affected in a way that it does not hinder the future development of the intersection.
I think you should say constructed in a manner.
Construction, what did I say?
Effect.
Okay, it's just that corporate speak, constructed in a manner.
Which will provide for traffic loading if a future, if, if in the future a three-line, a three-lane were constructed.
The bowers of operation, of business operation are at midnight, end at midnight. The applicant shall review the commercial uses with staff prior to leasing to ensure that there is enough parking before it is leased out. The applicant shall provide a final declaration of restrictions and the applicant shall submit final photometric and final landscaping plans. The other thing.
And, and the affordability.
And the affordability plan. And what about, do, do you have already the final soil and erosion as well as construction phasing?
We, we get the fin, we get that.
We get the final for the zoning permit.
I mean, we have the draft plan.
And then finally, in the findings that this is consistent with sections six fifteen and six seventeen of the regulations in terms of the standards that it meets.
So you just mentioned the bus stop, but then the light also, that we're going to pay, pay for the light. I know we talked about that.
Yes, yes, if I didn't say that. Did I leave anything out, you guys?
Anything else you want to add?
The structure.
Well, I think we, that's what, that last thing of take the loading of a road if they do widen it.
Do we want to add anything in terms of a look back? Like we did, like in six months after construction, they do a traffic survey or anything like that, so we find out what the intersection is doing? Does that make any sense to anybody?
Well, I think you should have one because then at least there is a mechanism.
A feedback loop.
Right, because if it's just waits till it's up to DPW or somebody else, that you might not get any feedback, so.
So this is when, after full leasing or something?
Yeah, I would say after.
Well, let's put it this way, I'd hate to.
You don't want to do it with, when it's completed. I think that when the building is.
It has to be functioning.
Eighty-five percent occupied. So you can get a real look.
And who does that, who does that look back?
The applicant.
The applicant provides a traffic study, an up, an updated traffic study on all the relevant, on all the affected feeder streets.
Well, no, just, I think just, what they did before is the, is the intersection and the Sheep Hill traffic.
Well, except that, do you remember?
They didn't do anything else on any other feeder streets that I'm aware of.
They did, they mean they did the counts of all.
I know they went down to exit five.
Yes.
Well, I'm thinking about the comments that the people on Apache made, that they were having trouble getting out and could we include that? Could we include a look-through to see that the traffic is flowing so that the residents, because there might be, and then we have to look at whether something else could be done.
Well, the only thing you can do at this point is adjust the timing of the light. And I think as everybody said, it's unless you get the pedestrian phasing done, that's the next step. And all I recommend that we take an earlier look-back so we can force that change because everybody admits that's the things that will have the most effect on that intersection.
I mean, the look-back is just, is on the intersections since that's what they control in respect to the timing.
Right.
But to look at the, how it's flowing in general and can we.
Well, just to make sure the level of service is.
Yeah, I think you just have to go with the level of service.
Sorry, it's turned into a.
But you have to go with the intersections that were studied in the plan, so you have a baseline.
Okay.
You know, you can't, otherwise what are you comparing it to?
Right, it's this intersection.
Okay, all right, so.
And it's this like they have control of.
All right.
Just to be, and I think actually just to make sure that the end result is that if we have, study in six months or after.
Six months, eighty-five percent occupied.
Eighty-five percent occupancy. If there is an issue, that the issue be addressed by adjustment to the timing, to the traffic signalization or the system itself. Because I, if you study it and if it's, if there's something wrong, what's, what do we do about it? So we need to actually include something. So we need to actually include something that we're going to do, or ask the, have the applicant do.
Well, it depends on what it is. It could be deliveries, you know, but that's the thing, I think...
He's got to fix it.
Okay, yeah.
And DPW would take over control of the light. So I mean, the town would maintain it and control it after the fact. It's just the initial cost and install, whatever, that the applicants take care of.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's it, we're done.